Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Before I call the special meeting to order, I want to thank County Manager Rory Fluman, Finance Commissioner John McPhillips, and our new Finance Commissioner Jackie Falatiko, as well as all of the others involved in the preparation of the proposed 2023 program budget and the proposed 2023-2028 capital improvement program. I'm very happy that we've been able to put forth a budget this year that continues to hold the line on property taxes while preserving the essential services we provide for our residents, including the county highway system, public safety, the county library system, senior long-term care, to name a few. Our past efforts to budget conservatively, operate more efficiently, and identify innovative ways of saving money have paid off. Our average tax levy over the past seven years has remained flat. It has not always been easy, but it's a testament to the hard work of this body and to our staff to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. The budget before us this evening is a continuation of those efforts to efficiently and responsibly provide the services our residents depend on. So let us proceed to the final stage in the process that sets the fiscal course for 2023 and well into the future. The 2023 budget adoption meeting is now called to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Fields.
President.
Mr. Russo.
President.
Ms. Pratt is absent. Mr. McGill.
Present.
Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Ms. Gata.
Here.
Mr. Frisone.
Here.
Mr. Cuomo.
Here.
Mr. Paterno.
Present.
Ms. Ostrich.
Here.
Ms. Valano.
Here.
Mr. Hess.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Mr. McDonald is absent.
Mr. Jazinski.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by our clerk?
Almighty God, Creator of all and judge overall, we pray thee to guide our work in this meeting and in all our duties. We pray for our officers and members of this legislature who serve and guard the welfare of the citizens of this community, that by thy blessing they may be enabled to discharge their duties honestly and well. We pray that by thy help they may observe the strictest justice and preserve untarnished our loyalty to our county and to thee. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by legislator Hess.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will clerk please read the note or the call of special meeting?
Please take notice. At pursuit of subdivision three of section 2.03 of article two of the Administrative Code of the County of Schenectady, there is hereby called the special meeting of the county legislature by the clerk thereof at the direction of Chair Anthony Jazinski Sr. to it. There shall be a special meeting of the Schenectady County Legislature on Wednesday, October 19th at 6:00 PM by the call of Chair Anthony Jazinski Sr. to be held in the chambers of the Schenectady County Legislature located at 620 State Streets, Schenectady, New York, sixth floor, for the consideration of resolutions adopting the proposed Schenectady County 2023 program budget and the proposed 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program.
Thank you. At this time, we'll now move to the first item on our agenda this evening, which is resolution 172-22, sponsors the committee on rules. The clerk will read.
Resolution adopting the tentative operating budget as the official budget for 2023.
Any discussion? Let's hear it, Hughes.
Mr. Chairman. The majority caucus has prepared a few amendments to the 2023 operating budget submitted to us by the county manager. We have provided copies of these amendments to you, Mr. Chair, and also to the clerk of the legislature, and our legislative staff is now distributing to all the members copies of the resolutions marked up and also our narrative for our amendments as well. And with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, I will provide an overview of our majority amendments.
Yes, sir.
The majority operating budget amendment number one. Like many employers across the country, Schenectady County and our partner municipalities are struggling to hire qualified people for positions in our workforce. Unlike private employers, however, local government has an added challenge presented by the New York State Civil Service System, which requires applicants for most positions to take a test. Despite efforts to expand the pool of applicants, such as modifying residency requirements, offering signing bonuses for select positions, increasing starting salaries for highly sought-after positions, the challenge of attracting job seekers to take the required New York State Civil Service exams continues. While the civil service hiring system is set forth by state law and governed by the New York State Office of Civil Service, there are steps county government can take to remove certain barriers and make the process less daunting. We propose the following. We propose a 2023 amendment to include a one-year pilot program, which will eliminate the fees that are charged to those seeking to take civil service exams for county and local positions, on the presumption that these fees may be a barrier to certain individuals that find it onerous to pay that fee in order to take an exam. The fiscal impact would be negligible to the county, but will remove the barrier for those who struggle to pay the fee to take the test. Further, the majority caucus hereby directs the County Office of Human Resources and Civil Service and the Schenectady Job Training Agency by this amendment to develop strategies to recruit additional candidates to take civil service tests for county and local positions and to direct them to resources that can be helpful in helping them succeed in taking the test. Our minority, our majority operating budget amendment number two. County's Office of Public Health and Administrator, Emergency Management, well-trained staff and well-prepared to lead the county through most emergencies. The COVID-19 pandemic taught us several lessons on steps we can take to be better prepared. In those early days of the pandemic, and many of us here remember how sad they were and how trying they were, in those early days, our staff behaved admirably, but we had an extremely difficult time in maintaining an adequate supply of personal protective equipment to keep them safe. To ensure that Schenectady County and our employees have the tools they need to keep county government functioning to serve our residents in times of crisis, the Schenectady County Legislature Majority Caucus hereby directs the county manager to strengthen the pandemic stockpile, a supply of personal protective equipment, sanitizer, cleaning supplies, syringes, and other materials that may be deemed necessary by the Director of Public Health and Director of Emergency Management. The fiscal impact of this measure is estimated to be about $100,000. However, the county manager will pursue potential state reimbursement offsets. Our third amendment to the operating budget. The wise and prudent management of county resources over the past several years has allowed the county to maintain a healthy rainy day fund for use in challenging fiscal times. The Schenectady County Legislature's majority caucus recommends, recognizes that the current economic climate poses challenges to our residents and hereby amends the 2023 county budget to establish the 2023 Schenectady County Homeowners $250 rebate program in order to provide relief to property taxpayers. The legislature hereby directs the county manager to take steps necessary, including requesting state authorization for this action, to establish said rebate program and to establish the eligibility for the program based on eligibility for the New York State Basic, Enhanced, and Credit Star programs. The fiscal impact of this initiative would be $9 million and will provide rebates to the owners of approximately 34,500 parcels. At this time, I would move that the majority amendments to the 2023 operating budget be moved to the floor for consideration.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's hear it, Fields. Thank you. Any discussion on the majority amendments? Any discussion on the majority amendments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the majority amendments. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is absent. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frisone.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two absent.
Thank you. Amendments are hereby adopted. Twenty twenty-three operating budget is amended. Are there any further amendments? Any further amendments? Any further amendments? Seeing none, we'll now move to the 23 operating budget as amended. Is there any discussion on the amended budget? Let's hear it, Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and all the members of the legislature, and everyone that's viewing this. I want to thank you for joining us this evening. Over the last few weeks, should I say, the legislature had received a budget from the county manager, a proposed budget, and it was reviewed. We had a public hearing whereby we were able to listen from the public, from some of the comments that they have made in regards to the budget. And tonight, as you've heard, the majority had also made some amendments to the budget that's going to be beneficial for all taxpayers in our county. As you've heard this evening, the resolution for tonight is actually calling for the support of the operating budget. I would just like to present you some small summaries before we proceed in regards to how the amendments affect the operating budget. But in regards, I would like to say to you that this year has been a very strange financial year, both in the stock market, but also for many municipalities, state, and the federal government. We can see that there have been very turbulent swings recently in the stock market. We've been seeing that interest rates have been changing, commodity prices have changed over the last year. It affects our lives, it affects our businesses, and yet, at the same time, with these type of changes, revenues for businesses have continued to be upward and steadily rising. I know we just read today, the Wall Street Journal just came out with Goldman Sachs great 43% reduction in some parts of the revenue, but you can tell me, the first half of the year, even though it's a 43% down, revenues have actually gone up. So yes, there are some mixed signals that's going on out there, and we are not yet at the bottom. I can say to you that what's going on in Europe with the, with the Ukraine war, what's going on in other parts of the world, the United States is actually doing better than the outside world. And to think of that, you can think of what just happened just a couple of weeks ago. You probably read in the newspapers that $100 billion is going to be invested in the Syracuse area, $100 billion. And I would like to say to you that this is, this is not something that's, it should be new, it's rare, it's a microchip company, but why is this happening? And I think more of these things will be happening more in the United States. Why? Because the rest of the world is having political unrest. The rest of the world is having a war. The rest of the world is also thinking of other countries, think of annexing other countries. So these corporations that we have in the United States that was outside, in China, Taiwan, Singapore, who knows, are coming back. And so therefore, you see a couple of weeks ago, that large investment, but there are smaller ones taking place. We offer a stable economy, we offer a stable political environment. So my message to Schenectady County is, Ray Gillen, find more of these investments to come to us, keep your ears open, keep your eyes looking, because it's going to happen, and I hope it happens soon. But our sales tax revenues in this particular county has been strong. We expect the pandemic to actually impact that, we thought that in the beginning, but that hasn't happened. Over the last two years, our sales tax revenues have grown in numbers that I cannot even explain. We're talking exceeding numbers that no one would expect. And so it's very vibrant. Our gaming revenues, we thought that would have tanked, all of a sudden it's going over 100%. How is that happening in this particular economy? I can't explain that to you. I can't explain to you why your hotel revenues, they did tank and now it's going up again. So we have these strange dynamics that's taking place. It's taking place on the state level, it's also taking place on the federal level. It is why you can hear of all these new spending ideas that's coming around. The reason why they can spend these big proposals, because they're making more money than they ever did before. And so tonight, being in a good financial position, Mr. Hughes and the rest of the members here had offered up these amendments you heard tonight, giving a huge rebate back to the star payers in Schenectady County. And so our budget tonight grants that. It also helps with the dental clinic that's going on, as you heard him explain earlier, to satisfy the needs not only for people that own homes, but also people who are financially desperate and need assistance in even in that wonderful world of dental service. And of course, this continues. Mr. Fluman had described throughout the budget, we have one of the highest ratings in our county-type sphere that we work at, we're the highest, AA1 by Moody's. It keeps, in a sense, our bond interest rates lower than most. I know the interest rates have gone up, but in reality, it keeps it lower than all that's around us. And I'm very happy for what has happened over this last season. Primarily, our budget today is roughly $391 million in appropriations, it's $60 million greater than it was last year, which is $13 million above the proposed budget that we had. Our budget is balanced. It's balanced with $114 million in sales tax revenues that we projected. It's balanced because they have federal funds and state funds coming in, that's roughly $95 million. And then we have about $111 million in mortgage recording tax, hotel tax, bed tax, surplus monies, all these things come together, DMV fees, pilot monies, it's coming together, has now balanced our budget. And then most importantly, we did not raise the property taxes in Schenectady County. We have kept it as pretty much the same as it was back in 2016, 2017. That's how things have changed. Seven years have passed in the development of county government, the budget has grew over those last seven years, and yet, the property tax for your, for us for 2023 is what it was back in 2016. So things are going well, yet at the same time, we need to realize that we should be prepared for any risks or change that may result from this economy. It's unpredictable. We've been saying this for the last two years. Will the economy change? Will it have a negative impact in Schenectady County? And we haven't really seen it yet, but we do know that one thing is happening. People are coming in for social services, that's going, that's increasing. So we are prepared for that. You know, this, we are thankful for the federal government and state government, it's still providing additional revenues for us to help in public health, additional revenues to help in a nursing home, additional revenues to help even today. We can think of what's happening with the district attorney's office, we can think of what's happening with the public defender's office. The state has given us quite enough, enough revenues to help, even though we have increased costs, to offset these particular expenses. Even in nursing home, more state aid, more Medicaid money, as you noticed, the bonus money just went out, but there's an increase in, in, in help that's coming from the state that's offsetting the large increase in our budget that we had. So the UCC, for instance, they're having an extra $1.4 million every single year, which we're applying to help offset the salaries for that particular sector. It's a very important need that we have. And think of it, the courts, we have our courts here, it just got a 9% increase in, in receipts. But at the same time, we have, because of the turbulence in, in Wall Street, our pensions have been affected, so yes, there's some $2 million increase in cost for that, and yet, we have some, you know, healthcare cost increases. But as we notice, the county still continues to provide services for residents. We continue to do so in our community college. SUNY Schenectady is still getting an additional 2% growth, making it over $4.2 million in, sorry, continuing to get growth both in the operating side and also, you learned tonight, well, in your books, you'll see, even in the capital side, major, major improvements that are still taking place there. We're still providing services to our healthcare providers, that has not decreased. Law enforcement, first responders, all these coalition, community partners, all these people accessing, you know, opioid treatment, monies are there to address those particular needs and to help them, improving the costs and also the services that they are provided. Senior services in this county in relation to home-delivered meals, current good-delivered meals, home care, personal care services, transportation services, continue to provided, and it is a wonderful thing to help the seniors of our county. They're one of our strong base. We all, one day, will become one of them. So I would like to say, I want to thank Schenectady County for what they're doing there. But of course, as we mentioned before, with the district attorney receiving extra money, with the public defender receiving extra money, the sheriff's department also is doing additional spending and also providing a service with the targeted street crime and the drug tax force. So there's many things yet going on in Schenectady County. This budget is very This budget is very, very helpful in that particular regard, and tonight, I hope we can have your support for this budget as we go forward. Our focus, over the years that we've been here, working with county government, helping with the budget, we have made record investments into this county, record investments into the community, while we still maintain a very strong, healthy fund balance. And whatever comes my way, we are prepared. We're definitely more efficient and effective in delivering our services to our communities and the needs of the people that actually where it should go. So tonight, I ask for your support, and I want to thank all those who had worked in this particular budget.
Thank you. Let's hear Fields. On Resolution 172-22, adopting the 2023 operating budget as amended, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk, please call the roll on the 2023 operating budget as amended.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is absent. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Sosroch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next term this evening is Resolution 173-22. The clerk will read.
For resolution adopting the capital program as the official capital program for the years 2023 through 2028.
Thank you. Any discussion? Chair recognizes Lieutenant Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I haven't quite discussed what Legislature Field said I had discussed earlier in the operating budget, but I rise tonight to offer one amendment from the Majority Caucus to the 2023-28 capital budget. And I believe a copy of this has been provided or will shortly be provided. The majority's amendment to the capital budget reads as follows. Majority Capital Budgetment Amendment One. Ellis Medicine surrendered its dental services and dental residency program on June 30th, 2021. The decision by the hospital left nearly 9,000 of its dental patients, mostly underserved children and adults in Schenectady County without a dental provider. Hometown Health, a federally qualified health center, took responsibility for this cohort and transitioned them into its already established panel of more than 10,000 patients. To make sure there was adequate space and staff to meet the demand for care, Hometown began operating a second dental practice at the vacated Ellis McClellan Street campus. Can imagine that that's operationally a little difficult. In August of 2021, the health center used $1.36 million of its own reserves to purchase the former Rite Aid retail pharmacy at the corner of State Street and Brandywine Avenue. The plan was to improve this blighted corner, which is a popular gateway into Schenectady, and restore the building so that Hometown could combine the two smaller individual dental practices into one modern dental practice. It has taken nearly a year for a team of architects, construction managers, state regulators, environmental experts, to design a plan that is compliant with all regulations. Total project cost is now $7.4 million, which includes the property purchase. Hometown Health is seeking assistance to reduce the gap between the funding it has secured and the cost of making the new facility operational. The Schenectady County Legislature Majority Caucus hereby proposes the 2023 budget be amended to appropriate a portion of the funding awarded to the county from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, to assist Hometown Health complete the construction of the new dental facility. An ancillary benefit of the move of the dental program to the new facility is that additional space in the existing Hometown Health building would be freed up. After some discussions with Hometown Health and our county staff, Hometown Health is willing to explore expanding mental health services in the additional space they will now have available at their current home. The fiscal impact of this grant will be $4 million. However, the money will come from the funding awarded to the county from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act, and we have no lasting fiscal impact on the county budget or on county taxpayers. At this time, I move that the majority amendment to the 2023-28 capital program be moved to the floor for consideration.
Thank you. Lieutenant Hughes, is there a second?
Second.
Let's hear Fields. Any discussion on the majority amendment? Any discussion on the majority amendment? Seeing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote on the majority amendment to the capital budget. The clerk will take the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
I vote yes.
Ms. Pratt is absent. Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Sosroch.
I am particularly proud of this amendment, and I am excited to vote yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two absent.
Thank you. Amendment is adopted. The 2023-2028 capital budget is amended. Any further amendments? Any further amendments? Seeing none, we'll now move to the 2023 capital budget as amended. Is there any discussion on the budget? Let's hear Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, last year, when we did the capital budget appropriations here for discussion, I said that was the largest capital budget we ever voted for. And I would tell you that this year, this is the largest capital budget we ever voted for, because it doubles the capital spending from last year. So this year, our capital budget as proposed right now is a $41 million. It's roughly $21 million increase over last year. We doubled last year. We added $4 million extra just recently for a very important service to renovate, as you just heard, the Rite Aid building and to deal with a new dental facility. The $41 million budget is roughly $21 million is being proposed to be bonded, financed $6.2 million with county operating funds or just cash, and then around $8.9 million in state reimbursements and $4.7 million in federal reimbursements. And as we heard before, this budget does so many things. We had the new books that came out this year. It was digital. It had pictures in there. It had color pictures, and I'm very pleased that it made the whole process go quickly. And if you had any questions, you could just flip the page on the computer, or you flip the pages, and you will find that our largest program primarily goes towards engineering, public works, our transportation, the runways, and this year, SUNY. SUNY Community College was huge. And, you know, I really enjoy the community college. I really enjoy the growth that's taken place there, and I think continuing to educate people to become better citizens in this county is actually one of the greatest thing we have. So we're providing a service that will make that possible and to make them find many different types of jobs in the future as they migrate their way through the community college. Of course, it's not just there, but it's also the nursing home. We actually do small repairs there. We do repairs to the jail. We do repairs to the library, and our fleet, our IT service, surveillance cameras. Once again, it's in this budget again, so that's continued to grow every single year. The Veterans Park Funtan, the mobile outreach van, something new that we're doing this year to help in this particular county in public health. And my favorite is the electric Zamboni. I think that's like a, is that cord going to be flying from the air, or is it just fully battery-operated? It's fully battery-operated. So it's actually, you know, no more smoke smell inside the ice rink that's there. But anyhow, I would just like to thank, as the chairman had said, he thanked the staff for their work that they have done. I myself would like to congratulate them for their hard work in getting us to this point, allowing us to continue the year to manage the budget process. I also like to welcome our new Finance Commissioner, Jackie Falatiko, once again. She's been there in the process, in the manager's office and working her way up, and so this is actually going to be a great year, a great fit for her. And I want to thank also someone who has helped us along the way when I wasn't able to do things, Tony Jazinski. He was a loyal soldier in getting things done. So I'm not going to get too much involved in that, but I do want, Tony knows what I'm talking about. And with that, I ask you to support the capital budget with its amendments.
Thank you, sir. It's easy to work this when you've got someone with the competency and capability and dedication and drive of Philip Fields when it comes to fiscal matters, so we make a great team. On Resolution 173-22, adopting the 2023-2028 capital budget as amended, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just add that working with this group, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the effort that goes into this every year. We do the big things in this community. We do the public health. We do the education. We do the facilities. We do the safety. We do the capacity, and I'm proud to be able to be part of that leadership. I thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to the support of all the members for the capital budget.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's hear Hughes.
I just want to add my voice to the several that are thanking our leadership team and also the county finance team. We're in a good spot tonight, as Legislature Fields has explained in some detail. We got to the good spot because we are consistent in how we budget from year to year. We benefit this year from the decisions that we've made in past years. That builds on our ability to set aside a rainy day fund. It builds on our ability to be able to rebate to taxpayers at a time when they're feeling some fiscal stress, additional funds, which, if you look at the median for what the county taxes, median price house, it's probably about 20% of that county tax bill is going to come back in the form of a rebate. Still pay the full tax, obviously, but then they'll get the 20% back. We're only able to do that because we have this process that we follow consistently year after year, and it's really a tribute to all the people around this table and the voters of Schenectady County who see the value that we add and continue to support us. So I'll be voting yes on the capital budget and would urge the following, Mike Folley to do the same.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk, please call the roll on the 2023 capital budget as amendment.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
I vote yes.
Ms. Pratt is absent. Mr. McGill.
I vote yes, and I just want to thank the leadership as well and the staff that have worked hard on this. This is my first one, and you guys made the process very easy, and we really appreciate the work that you all do, and we understand that working together works. So I vote yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Sosroch.
I am so pleased with these historic investments in our people, with the operating budget, and now the historic investments in our facilities. So yes, I vote yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed, and I believe that concludes our business this evening, and the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second. Let's hear Fields. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.[1760.72]